All right, I'd like to officially call this meeting to order. I will start with the roll call, Councilwoman Goldsmith. Councilwoman Challenger.
Here.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Councilwoman Jenkins.
Here.
Mayor James is here. If you all would stand and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you all for joining us. And don't forget about your microphones here on and off. First on our agenda is the FOP Lodge 151 for introduction and discussion. Come on down. Oh, no, no, you're at the table. You have, you have come, look at how far you have come.
I like sitting better.
And Bobby, you can put your microphone. Floor is yours.
All right, well, thank you for giving us a seat at this table to talk with you all tonight. Basically, this is just to introduce ourselves formally. We are the Lodge, the La Plata Police Department FOP Lodge 151. Previously, we were part of other outside lodges. First, Municipal Officers Lodge located in PG County, and then the NRP Lodge, which was Lodge 8. They were located in Hughesville. Unfortunately, it really didn't really tie into anything that we did, and it didn't really represent us. And we didn't have the representation that we needed. Just moving forward as the town grows and the department grows, there's a lot of things that we as a department, just internally, that would like to address amongst each other, whether it be camaraderie, just different things within the department and just as a social organization. Just to introduce us, I am the President, Matt Norris. Bobby Bagley is our Vice President. Jason Posey is the Secretary, and Jimmy Buckles is our Treasurer. And we do have other elected Lodge members as well, but we'll get into that another time. So basically, we created the Lodge to socialize and work towards positive relationships inside and outside the workplace. It was kind of hard to do that in somebody else's Lodge. They didn't really understand what we were talking about, if we had any problems or if we had any, you know, or any positive things that we wanted to talk about. At our last meeting, we recognized the promotions of Bobby Bagley and David Roy's within the department. Just something to, you know, help each other out and just to build better working relationships within the town and with the citizens of the town. For the most part, our goal is to address just overall working conditions. That does include pay and benefits, and it's just stepping stones to build towards professionalism and integrity of the department as we grow and move forward. We know the town's getting bigger. We're building up around here, and the department and other departments within the town will need to do so as well. And this is just something where we can address it internally and just, you know, open conversation with the town government, with the department command staff, just gives us open communication to work through those things. Aside from that, I think it'll help us in our, to build upon our already professional and our integrity within the department, and it'll help towards our recruitment and retention for the department. Moving forward, we just, we hope to work in concert with the town and build good teamwork relationships, just to address anything that does come up or any concerns you guys have, any concerns we have, just opening the line of communication. And hopefully, we're looking forward to meeting and confering with you guys again when the pay and benefit studies and personnel studies come back.
Right.
If you guys have any questions.
Counsel?
Do you have a location you'd like to use?
No, right now, we're, we meet in the Green Turtle right here, just in the back room. We rent out that room and just have a small meal, talk.
Any other questions before I get to mine? So 22 sworn officers right now, correct? All of them, have they all joined? Do they have to join when you get a new police officer that comes in? Do they have to join? Or highly?
It's not mandatory. They can opt out if they don't want to be a part of it. That's fine. They just, they would have to, if there's any kind, a lot of things that we like about the Fraternal Order of Police is we have a legal plan that we can buy into through it, and that covers you for one duty things. It just provides you with a lawyer, prepaid legal defense for the most part, and they do offer an off-duty contract as well. That's just something they would have to do on their own as a member of the Lodge. They wouldn't have that available to them, really. But...
So they pay an annual membership to belong to the Lodge?
Yes.
Okay. Can anyone else join your Lodge?
Yes.
So if sheriffs want, they don't want the one over at radio station?
No, they can't. If your department already has its own Lodge, you can't be a part of another department's.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately.
So who else outside of just La Plata Police would be able to join?
I mean, retired officers can join. We also have associate memberships where, for the most part, anybody that wants to be associated with the Lodge, they could apply to join, and then we would vote them in, you know. They just don't have any kind of voting rights or anything like that.
So it's just more informative or camaraderie?
Yeah, for the most part. And then we also have like honorary members that can be voted in, like say, somebody that was a good friend to, you know, the town or the police department or something along those lines, or they helped us in the past or something, we could vote them in as an honorary member. And then we also have business associates, where if businesses would like to, you know, be a part of the Lodge or help us in any kind of fundraising, anything like that, or if they allowed us to, you know, have our meetings at their place or something like that, you know, we have, there's different membership levels that they can buy into, and you know, they just, they get a FOP sticker, you know.
Basically, a sponsorship, they kind of sponsor in our Lodge.
And then last question I have for now. What about lobbying? Are you guys associated with lobbyists now with the, I'm not really familiar with how the FOP works. Do they have lobbyists who help you on, whether it's for legislative?
Yes.
Issues or whatnot?
The state and the national FOP lodges kind of handle that stuff, you know, more, they'll send people down to help you out, or you go up and join. Like as a president, I would go up to the state meeting, and you know, they talk about the different things that are occurring in like the Maryland Legislature that affects police officers and what they're doing to address certain things. Like I think they have like PACs and stuff that they're a part of, so it's, it's a win-win all the way around for everybody, honestly, so.
Well, good for you guys for doing that and taking that initiative, and I look forward to learning more about what you all do, and I'm sure we will, I'm sure we will hear back from you once that study is done. I'm sure we'll hear from every department once that study comes out, but it's well over, it's long overdue. Counsel, any other?
Just congratulations. I know it's helpful to be of a like mind when you have a group together, you have united goals and vision, and to have that as a full department, it's probably a lot easier than trying to explain where you guys are coming from to a different location and group. So I look forward to hearing from you guys and working with you, and I think it's a great idea. So props to you to getting that whole thing organized. I know it wasn't probably very easy.
Not at all.
Yeah, so especially when you're splitting from another FOP. They don't like to lose members, I'm sure. So, so thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How often do you meet? Or did you say that?
Once a month.
Once a month?
Yep.
So perhaps we could be invited just to talk and discuss things?
Sure.
Okay. And I would just echo Councilman Challenger's note, this is a good way to communicate and make sure we're on the same sheet.
Absolutely. That's our goal.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, see, you weren't so bad in the hot seat there.
No.
All right, thank you.
I mean, the sun is like beaming into my left eye right now, so I'm trying to like look over at you guys.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and just keep us informed.
Will do. Thank you very much.
That's because we've got the lawyer coming up next. We didn't want to get him upset. It'll take him forever. It's going to cost people money. Come on down, guys, for the annexation for Hawthorne Yards. We need to grab another seat. You can grab another seat. For the record, you just all introduced yourself, so we have that on there?
Yes, Steve Scott, attorney for the applicant.
Mark Watanoli.
Stacey Legano with Lorenz Dazza. All right, the floor is yours.
Okay, well, we don't want to take too much time. The reason we're here is to just take record notice of the record. So we noticed a week or two ago when we had our, we were scheduled to have our public hearing with the Planning Commission, that the concept plan for this project, in the event that it's annexed, that was in the record, and the town's official record was incorrect. It hadn't been updated. Now, I will say, the concept that we intend and that we're working with is what we presented on August 17th to this, to this council. It just didn't find its way into the official record of the town. So we wanted to, I guess, put that up on the screen. Can we put that up on the screen? And just see if the town has any further questions. And also to let you know that, of course, we will be back in front of you for a public hearing on this annexation at some point. Again, this is the concept we submitted and talked about at the work session on August 17 of '21, but there is a public hearing to be had before the mayor and council as well, and we'll discuss this in more detail at that public hearing. Again, having presented this before, and just for the purposes of correcting the record having this work session, do you want any more explanation now, or should we walk you through it? Or do you think we are sufficing to correct the record tonight with submitting that, that drawing?
Counsel, do you have any questions? I am fine with the presentation that you did on August 17th. It was just as the documents didn't match what?
That's correct.
That was. But if you do have questions, you know, you can have questions now, you can submit. I know, go ahead, Councilwoman Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Jenkins, Ward 4. Thank you for clarifying, because that was one of my questions, why the difference. But I do have to ask a question, and I suspect the answer, I think I know the answer, but there are three different exhibits, Exhibit K, S, and the concept plan. They all show different yields. They all show, one of them shows 142 single in 58 towns, one shows 125 singles in 48 towns, and the concept plan says 143 singles, 55 townhouses. So I'm just kind of making you a little confused why there's different numbers for different reports.
I'm not exactly sure of the difference, and I'll let Stacy speak to that, but I will say that if this is annexed, we are asking for one of the town's new mixed-use zones, NCX.
Right.
And that the final configuration and final design of the master site development plan will be done in concert with the Town Planning Commission as part of the NCX procedures, which are a lot, and some of you may recall, the master site process for Heritage Green, which is a TDX zone project, but the, the NCX works very similar to the TDX. And again, the final design, final unit count configurations, and master site development plan in general will be, if the, if the property is annexed, will be determined in accordance with the NCX provisions of the zoning ordinance. Anything to add to the?
No, the concept plan is the most current.
Okay.
And how many homes is that one? There's 58 towns, 143 singles.
And this is just for the record, the corrected and new Exhibit P to the annexation agreement, or I'm sorry, to the annexation petition.
Okay.
And I think also, one of the things, kind of dovetailing on that answer for you, Councilman Jenkins, is one of the things the town has expressed an interest in doing is not having quite so much design, concept, and layout detail in the annexation agreements. So if the, if the town annexes a piece of land, what I understand the town would rather do is not use the annexation agreement as a design and planning tool, but use the zoning category assigned and the zoning ordinance as a design and planning tool, which to us makes perfect sense, of course. So, so these are just very, very conceptual.
Thank you. Just two other quick questions. The traffic report was done in 2019, and it talks about traffic growth is minimal, but I'm just curious, the Harry Nice Middleton Bridge is going to open probably next winter, and so I just have a little bit of a concern about what kind of traffic could increase from that opening of the new bridge, because it'll be four lanes, two lanes in these directions, and then...
Quite a project.
And I'm hearing, anecdotally, that there could be a significant, well, could be an increase in traffic as people again bypass 95 and go up 301.
Okay, sure, and good question. We've got Mike Lindhart, who's our traffic engineer, and we actually asked Mike to update the traffic study. And Stacy, would you ask Mike to specifically take into account the, the opening of the Nice Middleton Bridge soon?
I mean, I don't know what, again, it's an anecdotal, but I hear a lot of folks, even at the county and the state level, talking about that.
And of course, Mike will be here and will be testifying at the public hearing that we have on this project.
And then just one final question. The sewer report is 2011. I mean, does that need to be updated?
With respect to sewer, I think we're good, and we can, we can present more detail on that at the public hearing, but Mark has been working with the town and with the town's engineers, Macron.
Okay.
To establish the method of searing. And one of the things that you may have recall about this project is there will be a significant upgrade to the pump station in Quillwood.
I just didn't know, the numbers just need to be recalibrated because it's...
Yeah, we'll double check that.
That's a pretty good number of years since...
We've actively worked with, with the town and with Macron.
Great.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, Counsel? That was easy.
Okay, we very much appreciate the time. Sorry for the confusion on the exhibit.
Oh, no worries. Appreciate you all coming back.
Can the public ask a quick question?
I hear somebody to ask a question?
Yeah, is it possible the public can ask a question?
Well, this isn't the time for asking questions right now about that. Can you, is it, if it's directed to Hawthorne Yards, is there a way that you can wait until the end with the public?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine, or I can email questions. That's fine.
I like to entertain questions.
It's certainly up to the town and the town manager, but we're happy to answer any questions. And also, I would invite anybody to reach out to me at my office if they've got specific questions about this annexation.
Okay. Go ahead then. And please identify who you are.
Yeah, Brad Williams, and I live like on the border of the, on Pocahontas Court.
Okay, go ahead.
I was just curious, 25 Pocahontas Court. I was curious, you said that there was different numbers of units on the different plans, I guess? It kind of came across as if it does get annexed in, then you can almost negotiate what you want to put in there. I get not wanting to have the exact design first, but it came across as if, once you get annexed, you can negotiate the numbers of units you put in.
So, yeah, and that question really expands on our discussion a few minutes ago. If the property is annexed, it'll be placed into a zoning category, which we're asking for NCX, which is a mixed-use category that would allow residential and commercial. And the way that the NCX zone works within the, in the zoning ordinance is that there is a collaborative effort to design and to establish a master site development plan for the project. So the concepts that are in the, the annexation petition are exactly that, concepts and targets. Not so much, I don't think I'd use the word negotiation. I think I would use the word collaboration, because I think that's what the zoning ordinance intends.
Does that answer your question, Brian?
Brad, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you for coming back and answering that.
Thank you very much.
All right. Mr. Greenville here for our AP, our ARPA spending plan review.
I'm just assuming they'll still be here when it's the public's time for questions. This is Jan Gray. I'm assuming that Hawthorne Development's still going to be here when it's time for questions.
And they will, it will definitely be entered into the record. It's usually for, for our public, it's public comments, and that is usually not an interactive event unless it is at the, at a public hearing. So absolutely, you can speak your three minutes when it comes to a public comment, and it will be for the record. And as Mr. Scott said, he is always willing to receive phone calls and emails about your concerns.
He needs to then give his phone number, and I make note that I have to give a comment and not be allowed to ask a question, but I will, I will, he needs to give his phone number so people can contact him. But I have a specific question, but we can just go through this round robin, you know, later as well.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I appreciate that.
No, I don't, thank you very much. I mean, I need a telephone number for me. He says contact him, but I don't have his phone number. And B, I really have some serious, I want to know...
Thank you.
If he wants to redo a traffic plan, he can redo a traffic plan, or I can get the information now.
So the information is on the packet? So if you do go to, obviously, you've signed in, so if you do go to the agenda, you will be able to see Mr. Scott's contact information on that.
Okay, so I would like it noted for the record that I was not allowed to ask my question. Jan Gray, J-A-N-G-R-A-Y.
Duly noted. Thank you. All right, for going on to the next agenda item, ARPA spending plan review. It's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Kevin Greenville, Town Treasurer. We also have virtually with us Thomas Himmler from Thomas Michael LLC, who has been our consultant, helping us with our ARPA fund, our planning, and he's going to be with us throughout the process. If you recall, last month, we met and proposed the initial ARPA spending plan. Since that time, we have developed a timeline. Attached to the agenda is just a year-by-year overview of how we plan to expend the funds per project. I also sent to staff and mayor and council a more detailed timeline that also shows procurement and some more planning on that. Unfortunately, that file was too large to attach to the agenda. So tonight, bringing this back forward, any questions for mayor and council, we'd be happy to answer. The intention is, if mayor and council is fine with the proposal, at the business meeting next week, we will adopt a resolution to accept the funds, and we will also do a budget amendment to allocate those funds we plan to spend in this fiscal year. And we are aiming to stay under $750,000 this year, so we do not have to do a single audit, try to just do two single audits, so.
So I know one concern that you did have, that you were asking about some of the spending, was for the $100,000 going into the community, community foundation?
Yes.
Fund, and the other one was streetscaping. With that, you did provide us some information, some concerns about going into for the community foundation. For the benefit of here, could you discuss your concerns and whether you are on board with the money going in there or not?
Not so much, I guess, concerns, but also I wanted to give you guys full information on sort of, you know, if we are going to go the route of giving money to the La Plata Community Foundation, just what's involved. I think we need to get the community foundation back up and running, first off, and then they are, you know, significant things we're going to need to monitor with dispersing these funds. And that was just, I wanted to bring it to your attention, it is going to be certainly some extra staff time with this program. So that was just, I wanted, you know, you guys to have a full understanding of that, and also just on the streetscaping, sort of getting more feedback on how you guys envision that, just to help us with planning and procurement as well.
Did you receive enough information? I know that I emailed, I think Dave did, that I saw. Do you need more information on 19 or 20?
I think right now, if it's, the consensus is to move forward from council, we can work that out as we go through this. I think it's more just getting a consensus from council that you would like to move forward with those two projects. And, you know, this is going to be a living, breathing document in process throughout the next four and a half years, I think, is when we have to fully spend those. And I also have Tom, Tom Himmler tonight. If you wanted to say anything, Tom, about the community foundation or any comments you have.
Thanks, Kevin, and good evening, everybody. It was just really, we just want to remind the town, especially as it relates to the foundation, that the way the federal rules are, they will be treated as a sub-recipient. So when you provide funds to a sub-recipient, you just got to make sure that they have the ability to implement the, the program or services that they're going to be doing, but also that they do it in a fashion that complies with the federal guidelines that the US Treasury has, has established. So these were just a couple of things that, that should the town move ahead, that it would be advisable that they address before, you know, before the foundation starts, you know, putting out applications. And also, too, just giving some direction as to what activities specifically this foundation would be, would be overseeing, what programs, what services, and if the mayor and council wanted to specify that, that you should probably do so as, as part of a grant agreement between the town and the foundation, so that all parties are clear what programs they're operating on your behalf. And then ultimately, like anything, the town is ultimately responsible for, for whatever they do. So if they, if they happen to not follow guidelines for some reason, the town is ultimately responsible for their, for their actions and behavior as it relates to funds allocated to them. And a couple of things that in talking to the town manager and Kevin was, just make sure that they have, you know, they're, that they're in compliance with their own bylaws, that they have, you know, active board members so that they can conduct meetings and conduct the process on the programs and services that they'll be providing on behalf of the town. And we'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have on our, on our summary of just reminders that we shared through Kevin.
Thank you.
So Councilwoman Bryant Ward, Ward 3. So as I understand it, I asked some questions about the community foundation previously, and as I understand it, the foundation had not given out funds in a number of years. So is that...
I don't know when the last time. I believe it is within the past few years we have given out funds through the, yes.
Because as I understood it, we have a difficult time getting people to apply. And so if we have had challenges in the past getting folks to apply, and we allocate funding to them, and they're not able to spend it down, what position does that put us in? And are they actually active and engaged now? Do we have a board?
No, we don't. We need to reestablish the board.
So we're going to reestablish a board in the hopes that they will be able to expend funding?
Correct.
When they've only expended a few grants over the past few years.
Yes. And I get, Tom, I do have a question for you. If we did, you know, if the, we entered into this agreement with the community foundation, and they had money left over, I mean, is that something, how would that work in regards to ARPA?
You would really need to, to have them, you know, provide it back to you. Now, now, part of this will be in the structuring of what the relationship is. Given the, the fact that they haven't done, you know, this type of volume before, it may be advisable to, to start them off with a smaller tranche for a specific program, see how they administer it, and then you can always add additional programs or, or fund them again in additional years so that they're, that they're not necessarily getting 100,000 all at once, given that in the past, from looking at some 990 filings they've had, they've only, in the past, they seem to be around 7,500 to $10,000 that they were, that they were giving. So one suggestion could be that you, you allocate a smaller amount out of the $100,000 pool, see what the response is, see what programs, tell them what programs you would like them to, to implement, see how they operate it, and if they do, do well, then you can always... See how they operate it. And if they do, do well, then you can always, you know, re-up that agreement for, for the next fiscal year to allocate additional funds to them. So you don't necessarily have to allocate the entire $100,000 to them from the very beginning. Especially as you're setting it up, we would advise you probably to, to give them some time to get situated and see how they can operate a program, a specific program before you, before you give them additional funds.
So I think they already have bylaws and operating, you know, did not specify what type of programs it has to be in accordance to their bylaws and how they operate. So that could not, you didn't do that. And I think they're only for nonprofits, right?
I believe so, yes.
And the nonprofits have to be in the incorporated town.
Yes.
And we don't have that many nonprofits in the incorporated town. So I think that, you know, we need to really consider this, um, if that's not going to be the goal.
So if we move forward with saying that we agree with the 20, um, that you proposed, or whatever the number is, could we, as Councilwoman Bryant Ward said, uh, suggest that, okay, maybe 100,000 is a little much. Could we shift and say, okay, maybe 50,000 and then put 50,000 elsewhere?
I may, Madam Mayor, Brent Manuel, Town Manager. I think all these details can be worked out in the grant agreement that Tom referred to, uh, the specificity of, you know, how it's drawn down. If we want to do it, as Kevin said, over next three and a half, four and a half years, we may, they may have a budget for 25,000 a year here, for example. But, uh, Councilperson Brian Ward brings up a good point is that maybe need to be language that talks to their bylaws that, you know, if they are outside of their scope, then we may need to address that even before, before we consider engaging them to, uh, spend down these funds as well as how the money comes back to the town at the back end if they're unsuccessful. Uh, that money will need to come back to the town. That can be worked out or in agreement. Uh, within a specific timeframe, they need to expend those funds or donate those funds if you will. And if not, they have to come back to the town. A shot clock to get rid of that money and.
I'd like to see a historical, um, performance from them to see, you know, when and how often have they been able to, you know, disperse grants, um, before we make a determination on what we want to give them.
And I, I can get you outside information.
Thank you.
And one point to add, if I may, Kevin, is that they have, uh, now it's, it's hard to tell how, how dated it may be, but they have some grant program guidelines established. So it, it may be worthwhile for the, for the, the town to look at that and, and, and to see if they want to provide them that. It's pretty broad what they can do and, and whether or not you would want it, as, as Brent was saying, whether or not you want to narrow it down a little bit for these funds in particular. Because they, their, 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 their guidelines is very, very broad as to what they could potentially allocate the money to. But again, it, the federal rules are going to narrow it down for the ARPA funds specifically.
And within our timeline, we, uh, don't anticipate, um, allocating these funds until next fiscal year anyways. To allow us time to, so, you know, this is always a living, breathing document. And, um, you know, we can shift it as necessary.
Well, I'm fine, uh, moving on with what you have presented. Jim?
I, I like to keep hearing that living, breathing document type thing because we might not know what we need next year sometimes, and we need to be able to have the flexibility to do something like that. I've already had an inquiry from Port Tobacco Players, uh, about the ARPA funds. That's a big word out there, the ARPA funds. And I guess, uh, thinking as we're talking about the foundation, if they wanted something, I would view that they would go through the foundation to get that.
Absolutely.
Yes, um, Councilman Matt Toronto Ward two. So, yeah, I, I have the same concerns, um, that Councilwoman Ward has because it seems like every time we've talked about foundation, never really clear about the status. Um, it's a tremendous amount of money, but given that we have a amount, some time and we can give them some guidelines, you know, um, that's helpful, but you shouldn't have to tell a board or a group to be in good standing, uh, to, to earn, you know, this kind of opportunity, right? So that's my biggest concern. Thankfully, we have a, it seems like a pretty wide window of time to reallocate or to shift or pivot is what it sounds like. So, um, given that, um, you know, I'm comfortable with as it's presented, knowing that, you know, we're not, we're not doing anything with this allocation for another fiscal year. But they certainly need to earn the, the opportunity. That's how I see it.
What's on the side of what?
I'm, I'm not comfortable with it. Um, I, I would like to see some documentation from the foundation. Again, if they were active and engaged and were able to give out funding, you know, and it had a demand for their services, that would mean something to me. But now to go out and hope that people come to them to look for funding, you know, um, that's not how I've understood them to operate. So when I see the historical performance, then it'll help me make a better decision. But right now, I would not be in, in favor of that.
So you're not in favor of moving anything along on that?
Well, I mean, I don't see.
And, and I, and I can speak to, uh, and I know Michelle is the guru on there. But, uh, I know that, uh, there are four, um, normal, regular, uh, people that, or regular organizations that, um, come back and one of them's lifestyles. COVID may have changed it a little bit, but the big hairball came in a couple of years ago. Um, and they have asked every year, COVID shut down a lot of things. But I think we still, the, the community foundation still dispersed funds, um, the last couple of years. And you would be able to tell because of it zeroing out in the, um.
Yeah, I, I will pull all that historical data for you.
I did have a conversation with Michelle, um, about this. So I do understand that. And in my mind, with COVID being especially hitting nonprofits, that would have allowed them to come back more because there was more of a lead in the demand. And so I, everything did shut down because of COVID. I was on the COVID grant committee for the county and we had tons of folk coming because they could not operate. So I, I don't think that COVID would, would be an, you know, a factor in them not coming to give funding. So I would like to see the historical performance.
It was just like the big hairball. They didn't have it because of COVID. So there was no need to ask for money on that one. That was one of the nonprofits that had been. Um, there. All right. So I've heard, uh, from Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Councilman Jenkins?
Councilmember Jenkins, Ward four. Uh, I would concur with, um, Councilmember Bryant Ward. Uh, I, I'm very uncomfortable right now because, uh, and again, the, the Playa Community Foundation, I, I, I'm sure does a lot of good. I just don't know what it is, to be frank about it. I mean, I, we don't have members, so I, I would concur with getting that information because I'm, right now, I'm very uncomfortable with it. But that's not to say, you know, it, it's a great cause and they do a lot of good to the community. But, um, having experienced federal grants in another world, um, if you don't spend it, they're going to let you know that you did it wrong. And we don't want to be in that position. So I certainly am a little cautious about that. So I, again, I'm, I'm, I'm uncomfortable right now until I get some, we get some other information.
Mr. Greenville, could we, um, move forward with everything except pulling that one until we, uh, receive more information on that? And then if, if we decide that 100,000 or 25,000 or zero is the appropriate, um, amount, we can move forward with that?
How I intend to bring the legislation forward, you are not authorizing the, um, a community foundation Tuesday night. You're going to accept the, the funds, the grant funds. And then we're going to do a budget amendment for what we have listed here in FY22, and that's it. So that, this can be a continuing discussion and, you know, part of our budget process. Uh, this coming up will be, you know, putting into next year's budget, those ARPA funds that we intend to spend next year. So you're not, you're not authorizing this yet. And I, I don't even think we can move forward with it without going through a lot of processes with getting the, the, the board back up and running, and you guys need to authorize that. So the, we're not doing anything Tuesday, next Tuesday with the.
We're just accepting the funds.
Accepting the funds and doing a budget amendment for what we anticipate to expend in the current fiscal year, which is not the community foundation.
And with that said.
And I'm very comfortable with, again, you know, having the opportunity to, you know, work through the process throughout the year and it's subject to change and refinement because time and conditions will change. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that part of it.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward, are you comfortable with accepting the funding for next, uh, at legislative, I mean, at the, um, work session, business meeting next week?
I still don't have the information.
Oh, he's saying that it's just, we are accepting the funds. We're not allocating, we're not.
Not for the community foundation.
No, we're, we need to, we're going to do a resolution to authorize the funds, that the town will accept them. And then, um, we are going to just do a budget amendment for those few projects that we anticipate doing in FY22.
So that's the 5.2 million in FY23 on your?
Me, well, no, it's going to be $97,000.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, for FY22, and that'll be next year.
Next fiscal year, right. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. So I think we are all in agreement that we are, um, that we will accept the funds. And then, like you said, it's a living document. We'll alter it the way that is best for the community. All right. Any other questions from council? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stahl, come on down.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I bring to you tonight, three procurements that we would like to engage in here in March. Uh, we are very busy with a number of things. And the first thing that I would bring you is the annual cleaning of the wet well at the Willow Lane Pump Station. And every year, this time of year, generally, we end up with a large buildup of grease in the Willow Lane Pump Station. And as some of you may know, um, the grease usually gets to three to five feet thick down in there. And it's, the wet well is 45 feet deep. So it takes one heck of a vac trailer, truck to be able to suck that material out of there. They have to use high pressure jetting down inside of that wet well. It is quite a job and there are very few companies that can actually do that. Uh, we have dealt with Kleins up in Lancaster, Pennsylvania, uh, every year for the past, uh, eight years to get it cleaned out. We've done it annually. And, uh, they were, Kleins was bought out by a company by the name of Wind River. So the, uh, estimate that you saw in the proposal, uh, was from, uh, Kleins, but it's actually a Wind River company. And, um, the quote was for the 32.7, but that number is adjustable because it's based on how many trailers, trailer loads of grease they get out of there. And you'll see that each one of those, they bring in, uh, huge tankers, uh, tractor and trailers, and they actually pump the grease out of the wet well. And then they fill tankers. And every year we filled anywhere between three and five tankers full of grease. And they take it back to, so this includes disposal of that material. They take it back to their, uh, facility in Pennsylvania. So we, uh, always, this proposal was based on three, uh, I'm sorry, four, uh, trailers and three men, uh, to work on this. But it can, if we need additional trailers, I, I would have to go and, while we're working on it, get the additional trailers to clean that out. So I, my, what I generally ask for in this is the approval of up to $40,000 in this situation. But it is a necessity, I promise you. And, uh, it is something that if we don't stay ahead of it, it could get really bad. So just based on where it is today, it does look like that it's, um, there is a platform down in there that we can stand on down in that wet well. And the men can work off of the platform, but the grease is almost up to the platform. We have had it in the past where the grease actually pushes up through the platform. But it is a, it is a tremendous job down in there with high pressure cleaners and, uh, the vacuum to be able to suck it out. Um, one of the challenges we're going to have with doing that, as you can tell down there at the entrance, is trying to figure out the logistics of how to get trailers in and out of there on an already very congested, uh, road. Lieutenant Payne brought to my attention last week, when they were hauling some dirt out of there, that things got very congested. So I did get in touch with, uh, uh, DR Horton last week to get some better signage out there and to increase their presence when they have these large, uh, numbers of trucks coming out of there. And that day is going to be a challenging day when we come down to do it. Sometimes it takes two days to get this done. But right now, we can't even do it because they've got the one side dug out so much that we couldn't even back a tractor trailer down in there. But I do need to get this done as soon as possible, and I'd like to get the council's approval to do that. The second, uh, procurement is for a new truck, a new crane, uh, maintenance truck. And, uh, that is, as you know, we have a, um, maintenance truck that has a, a boom crane on it. The DR Cox drives. It's a 2007. And the other maintenance truck that Danny Wood drives is a 2006. And so we have been desperately looking, we've had it in the budget last year, um, at 120,000. Uh, it has been extremely difficult to find a vehicle. Uh, DR has located one in Florida, down in Homestead, Florida. And the truck purchase price is 162,192 dollars and 58 cents. Uh, the truck is still available. Uh, we did check on that, uh, yesterday. And so it is still available and we'd like to go ahead and try to work on that and, uh, get that procured as soon as possible. The idea here is that we would fly DR down to Florida, they would pick him up at the airport, and then he would drive the vehicle home. So it is a new, uh, Chevrolet 6500. It's a medium duty truck, so it's a big truck, but it's got a nice heavy duty crane. And one of the things with these crane bodies, like even DR's truck, it's a six ton crane. So the body that they put on the back of the truck is a very heavy duty body. And so it's a very heavy truck because it does pick up a lot of weight on the one corner of the truck. And so, you know, it does have jacks that go out and step down. It is something that I think we should modernize our mechanic, uh, truck fleet a little bit. Those trucks are in excess of 15 years old. And, um, I don't, as you know, for me, I generally look on things that we don't use every day. You look for used equipment, then we, I knew, and this is one that I certainly suggest that we use quite often. It will also give us a second crane truck. And that's been one of the challenges of when we have breakdowns and we're without crane and we do have to pull, I guess, braces and that kind of thing. I would suggest that that would be a very valuable item to have. I had spoken with Mr. Greenville. Oh, on the first, it is budgeted in the budget, so we have put it in the budget. A truck for year two is budgeted it at $120,000. But because we're using the vehicle replacement fund, we do have the cash sitting there readily available. And this would come out of vehicle replacement fund. So, um, it, I think Kevin, I won't speak for him, but I think he would acknowledge that he and I have talked about all of these items and that they're all within the budget. Um, the third item that I bring to you is a little bit harder to, uh, work with because I, we've been looking for a medium sized excavator. We do have a very large excavator. We have a 90,000 pound machine, which is a very, very large. Move very often because it is so big and requires a lot of special permits just to be able to move it. But we are, um, we've been looking at how we can start to procure some of these, uh, projects that we have coming up. As you're aware, in the ARPA spending, we have 2 million dollars in ARPA projects. And money, we're needing for contractors to do that work as well at ourselves. Working together. And what I'd like to do in this situation is to buy a 26,000 pound excavator, which is a medium sized excavator. Um, it has rubber tracks on it so that we can walk on the streets without damaging the streets, which is a good thing. Um, it also allows us on, uh, water leaks and things like that on 301. One of the challenges that we run into is when we use our backhoes, and we do have two, uh, rubber tire backhoes that we use for, uh, working on water leaks. The problem is the backhoe in the back of it only goes at a 90 degree angle either way, you know, at a 45 either way. And so when you do that, you're digging in the hole like this and you have to turn and load on a truck in another lane beside you. So you're ending up having to take up two lanes. Whereas if you use an excavator that can turn 360 degrees, you can put the truck directly behind the excavator. And so when we're working down on 301, it does make it a lot safer because we can literally keep the truck directly behind the excavator. And it, it does make working so that you're not taking up two lanes and having to block off, uh, an active lane of traffic. So I think it's a positive for both ways. I went out and we were looking for this, uh, DR located an excavator that met our criteria. It is a nine, a 2009. It is a 2009 Gale 1202. It's a 26,000-pound machine, 100 horsepower. And we actually have some pictures. Danny and I, last week, D.R. actually got operated on last week to fix his foot. So he has been out of commission, but Danny and I did ride to Frederick. The excavator is actually located in Frederick. We went up and operated the machine. Even though it's older, it only has 1,400 hours on it. So we believe it to be a very good buy. It's $150,000 machine new, and the gentleman's asking $42,000 for this machine. So we feel that it's a very good deal for the town. He has been holding it for us, but he has been bugging me about when, you know, when he can get some notice of approval for this machine. Kelly? Kelly? Kelly?
Craig.
We're working on it. We have the pictures on the computer that we're recording from, so we have to, we have to adjust through some hoops. Give us a sec.
Sorry. But I think it's, I think it's a good value for the town. We did run it. It's a very tight machine. And we feel we would get a lot of service out of that machine and that it would really help us with the, with the projects that we have upcoming, and we're going to be doing quite a few. So we think it would be a very, that's the picture of the size machine. It isn't, it's not a mini. I mean, it is a fairly sizable machine.
How do you get it here? Is it on the back?
We go up with our Lowboy. We have a Lowboy. We'll go pick up, pick the machine up on Lowboy. It's a 13-ton machine, so you can see it's fairly, fairly good size, and you can see it does have rubber tracks. But it's very tight. And, you know, you're, you're talking less than a third of what a new machine costs, and so we, we feel it's of good value for us.
I like the fact that it's only 1,400 hours on that. That's huge, especially being a, what, 13-year-old?
Correct. And that's what we were looking for. Most of the time, you're probably talking a machine that had over 5,000 hours. This one, and we went up, that's what we really wanted to check, was all the pins and bushings on everything were still very tight. It was in, you know, in, in very good shape for being a 13-year-old machine. So we felt very good about it and thought that it would be very serviceable for the town. So I bring this to you for consideration, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sorry, yes. It's, well, it's from a company up there. They do a lot of, you can see they have a lot of dump trucks and things. They're right outside of Frederick, and he was buying a smaller machine. He actually does a lot of smaller jobs, and so he was going to trade this. This is about a 120-size machine, and he was trading it into about a 15,000-pound machine instead of a 26,000-pound machine. So he was going to go sell this one and buy a, what they consider an 80 instead of a 120. So.
Hi, any questions?
Councilman Brian Wood.
Councilman Brian Wood, Ward 3. So going back, so you have three.
Three procurements, yes, ma'am.
So where does the oil come from?
It's grease from people who are washing dishes. They are pouring grease straight down the drain when they cook fried foods. A lot of people feel that a sewer system can handle anything, and so they just pour grease straight down the drain. And it is, it is amazing, the amount of buildup that we, we, we clean out all of our pump stations on a very regular basis. And we would, we generally spend about $100,000 a year on grease removal. And so that's why we came earlier with the grease ordinance that we wanted to do, and we're trying to do a little bit better enforcement. But because the Willow Lane Pump Station pumps grease from basically everything on the east side of town, it takes the brunt of all of the grease.
And I think also we had a, with the COVID years, we had to have it backed twice because people staying.
We had to have it backed more because more people were home. And, and to be honest, we've been hauling, you know, during the whole COVID transaction, we were, we were generating about 200 tons a month in sludge during COVID. Today, we are back to around 150, 160. So we have seen a decline in the amount of sludge we're producing at the wastewater treatment plant. But it's just a matter of people staying home.
And then I want to talk about the maintenance truck. If that's D.R.'s truck that has those faded logos, I was going to call you about that.
It's 45, yeah.
Okay, if we're not going to buy a new truck, let's put some updated logos on it because that was just brand new.
We try. They're not cheap. They're expensive, and we, yes, they're, 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 I'm trying to remember what we paid for those. They're, they're not cheap. They're probably about $100 apiece, I think it's, so. But we, you're, you're correct, we should. But it just shows he does keep his truck pretty clean, and so using cleansers on them does tend to fade them out over time because it does have a bleach base in them.
And then, so you said 1,400 units, 1400 hours?
Yes, ma'am.
So how many hours can an excavator go up to before it's no good anymore?
Generally speaking, 10,000. Yes, ma'am.
And so what year is the truck that you want to purchase?
The truck is brand new.
Okay.
It's a 2021.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And it's a C6500. It's, it's, it's not really a pickup class. It's a little bit above a pickup class, but we need to have that heavier truck for being able to pick up.
It's a 2009. And the value of this excavator is actually what?
150,000 is what, it's comparable to a Caterpillar 311. And when you price out a Caterpillar 311, they're around $150,000 new.
Okay. And so he's, and did we look at the, the, what is it, the resale value of it? Is it 42,000 a good?
Is what he's asking. Most of the excavators that we did that were a reasonable comparison were all 50,000 and above.
Okay.
All right, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins, Ward 4. Regarding the, the clean out of the, the well at Willow Station, that is a congested site. And so I, we really appreciate the fact that the signs up, that they put up, that, that's a big help. And then I would just, if you know, and if you can anticipate when that operation would happen, can we get the word out on social media that there may be some congestion there?
Oh, certainly.
Because that, because people get a little upset, and, because I got a lot of calls about it last month.
In the past, is that we back the, we're going to be down there. I mean, I have the manpower down there because they bring the manpower in, but we first will back the pump truck in there.
It is good to get some people some notice or some, a couple of, if you can.
There's a lot of work down there that needs to happen. They have to, they have undercut that entire road going in there. And now you have that very narrow road going in. And so they're going to have to fill that entire east side of that road in so that we can get those trailers and back them over.
There's a frustration level that if people still may not like it, but at least if we can give them a little bit of advantage, that would really help.
And as I said.
Thank you.
Lieutenant Payne called me, and I immediately called Brian George, who's the site superintendent for D.R. Horton, and let him know. He, he realized, and I, as I said to him, you know, he's supposed to have more than just flagmen out there and provide the proper signage. It is, generally speaking, state highway's responsibility because it is a state highway. But when I ask them for something, I've helped them a lot, and they, they're not opposed to helping us. And so I did place that call, and he said he would take care of it, make sure that better signage was put out there.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments? Yes. Councilman Traulinger.
Councilman Traulinger, Ward 2. Thank you Director Stahl for your presentation. And to speak for all of us to say, great find by D.R. on the, on the excavator. You mentioned that you try to, just from a department perspective, look for used vehicles or used options where we're not using them every single day.
Certainly.
Can you weigh in on how new vehicle with the crane, as far as the maintenance truck, will better assist our residents having a new vehicle that is more capable?
Well, several things. That vehicle's driven every single day. And so having it to be totally reliable and not having maintenance that's generally occurring with used vehicles is a problem for us. And I'd give you the example, with our dump trucks, all of our dump trucks we've bought used. And we buy them used because we only use them when we have water leaks and things like that. And I can generally find them where we find a dump truck that's in very good shape that might have 150,000 to 200,000 miles on it. And the interesting thing is that 10 years from now, that truck won't have over 200,000 because we don't put 10,000 miles a year on that truck because the town's only five miles long and three miles wide, and we don't go that far with it. So what, what was sad was, before I came here, we bought an F-750 Ford dump truck in 2005 that today is 17 years old, and it has less than 20,000 miles on it. And so you start to say, wow, you know, why don't we try to figure out how to do some of these things? And so we have tried to, and a lot of these pieces of equipment, we get more capability by buying used equipment at a much cheaper price. We get the capability to do a lot of things. But when you don't use them every day and you don't put a lot of hours on it, it's nice to have the capability. But then you're not paying that very high price in the situation. So I think the justification is, just like I say, the pickup trucks, they get driven every day. They get miles on them because, you know, guys are operating every day, doing things, and it's, we're very dependent on it. D.R. takes his vehicle home because he keeps all his personal tools on that truck and that kind of thing. He doesn't live very far. He lives right here on Mitchell Road, so he's not very far away. But he does operate that truck every day, and it gets used, you know, quite often. And so I think the justification for these, just like trash trucks. Trash trucks, I always suggest, because they get operated every day, we need them, we need to depend on them, it's very worthwhile to buy new. But things that we don't use that often, kind of like the dump truck scenario, that kind of thing, this excavator, it will use it, and we'll use it often, but not every day. But it certainly says, maybe we should look for something used, and we've tried to do that. It's hard with government procurement and the rules that we set up and that kind of thing, which is a protection in that way. But I'm not afraid to bring it to you because that's just my nature, that I feel like in a lot of these things, I can bring to you a used piece of equipment that really makes more sense for the town and the plateau.
Sure. So just a couple, and I appreciate that, I think it makes sense to me, but just a couple sentence explanation just for a resident saying, what are you going to spend $162,000 on a truck for? Right? So how is it used on an everyday basis?
First, D.R. is head of maintenance for us. He is maintaining all of our sewer pump stations, all of our water stations. He does all of our welding. This truck comes equipped with a welder or a compressor. He's out in the field. If one of our trucks breaks down, this truck goes out and takes care of that. It is, I, I will grant you that, you know, looking at a truck and saying, my goodness, paying 162. But my, my own personal truck that I drive, an F-250 diesel, I looked at a new one the other day, it was $90,000. It's absolutely amazing for a, for a pickup truck. I, I just am amazed at the cost of where everything was. We did budget. I was looking at $120,000 on this. And with the way everything has gone up, it's now 162, and it does seem like a lot. But it does come with a welder, it does come with a compressor, it does come with the crane. It is a fully outfitted mechanic truck, and all he'll have to do is come and load his tools on it, and he'll be ready to go.
Okay. Thank you. Last question about Kleins, which is now Wind River. Sure, we've looked at local companies that would potentially be able to do it. You weren't able to find any local companies. And I, when I say local, I mean, not just Charles County, but Maryland.
We, we have, to be honest. I originally got them through MES, Maryland Environmental Service, because Maryland Environmental Service brought Kleins down here and had recommended Kleins for these type of big jobs. There are, you know, companies that can come down here and do it, but they have always done, they are a first-class company. They come down, they know what they're doing. They do these kind of, they work for WSSC. They do a lot of work for DC Water. Anytime they have a big clean-out job, they go with Kleins. And so they are down here, they know the bigger stations down here, and they do a lot of work down here in this area. They do have their own treatment plant where when they take the material back, they can deal with these large amounts of grease and that kind of thing. So they're a company, it's a very special company, and it's, in my opinion, it's worthwhile going with them because we do have experience with them and that they are, that they know what they're doing. And you'll, you'll see when they're here, and we'll let you all know, you'll see the kind of equipment they bring down. It is, the, the pump truck, just the vac truck alone, when they first, they, the one they've been using, they bought it new the first year they used it. And when the guy came down, he said they had just paid 1.25 million for that back truck. So it is, and, and just to put it in perspective, when you're vacuuming in a perfect scenario, a vacuum would generally be able to suck 32 feet. You're having to suck that material from 45 feet down and suck up solid material from 45 feet down. And so it requires a massive suction in this situation. You can't just use a standard vacuum trailer like most people have for a septic.
Okay. Thank you so much for that explanation.
All right. So, Council, I need to hear whether you are okay with these, moving forward with these three procurements. All right, I got a thumbs up. Councilman Traulinger?
Yes.
Yes, and I'm assuming the new, the new stuff has a warranty, the new truck has a warranty on it. How many years is that? That's okay, don't worry about it.
I will let you know. But it's the standard Chevrolet warranty.
Okay.
So it comes with a new Chevrolet warranty.
And the gas is on D.R. coming home?
It should be.
It's going to be just as much as the, the truck. There you go.
I'm sorry. I'm, we're going to put brand-new, brand-new signs on it. So we will bring resolutions forward.
Yes, I want to clarify, we will be bringing resolutions specifically to address the three items next week.
Fantastic. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Brings us to 2.6, which is discussion, Southern Maryland Carousel Group. Can you take that one? All right. So you all should have received the email. And what the ask is, I don't have my glasses here, but what the ask is, is they are asking if we will, I guess, appoint someone to their Board of Directors and act as a consultant on matters. I mean, so we would be responsible for that. As they said that they are looking to dissolve, they will cease their plan July 1st or sooner. And having said that, they are ready to turn the assets over to the corporation, of the corporation, over to a new Board of Directors. The new Board of Directors would be made up of people selected by us and ultimately appointed by Berkey to carry on the work, to bring up the carousel to our town. So what I need from, to hear from you all is what direction do we want to move forward? Because this is not just a, a staff decision or just a mayor's decision. That is something that, they have right now $355,000 and state grant money and assets over $300,000. So let's open a conversation here.
Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4, I, I, I'm frankly a little puzzled because I don't know the full extent of their work. I mean, I've heard over the years, but I really don't have a good sense of accomplishments, you know, expenditures. And I understand the state grant may have to be returned to the state because they haven't used it. And I understand the state grant may have to be returned to the state because they haven't used it in a certain amount of time. So that, so I I it just, I I I'm not doubting the, perhaps the world, the worthiness of the concept and the project, and I know they've been doing a lot of stuff for a lot of years. I'm just uncertain about how to proceed now, uh, because I just don't have enough information.
What I'm cautious about is, um, having counsel ever um, point, uh, what was makeup, this new board could be make a person selected by you. They're a nonprofit and we try to, that's why we have the community foundation. Um, we separate those and I am very, very cautious about us playing that role in a nonprofit or any business. I mean, we are elected officials and I don't think we should be muddering the waters.
Well, I think that it's as simple as appointing a board. You would have to establish a five oh one C three. And then, um, who would own the five oh one C three? And going out getting board members that are vested in this type of project is not going to be a simple fine, obviously. Um, and I I've seen the the work that they do and I think it's phenomenal, but they have not been able to move that forward. And so if they haven't been able to move it forward in the number of years that they've had, us identifying a board that is passionate about this would be an ask that is outside of our scope. I don't know where, um, you know, it would be within the scope of the mayor and council to establish a five oh one C three and appoint a board. Um, I just.
I think, and and maybe I am way off on this, but I'm thinking that the board that is established now in in his mind, we are just going to say, okay, you're no longer on, you're on. And so use their five oh one C three, but appoint. He, and he did, but, um, and that's where the.
So dissolving a five oh one C three means we have to reestablish a new one.
He said at that point, the current board would resign. And so, uh, he said that the Board of Directors will cease. So I think the Board of Directors would go away, but not the five oh one C three. But in any case, I I I do think that this is a rollback.
We could have to go away. We cannot take over someone else's five oh one C three we didn't establish. So if the five oh one C three, the board is, groups resigns, then it ceases to operate. So we would have to have a new five oh one C three. Bylaws, we have to draft bylaws, articles of incorporation, and then identify a board that's passionate about it. Now, whether that board, whether it's that board or not, it still is a five oh one C three that we would have some vested interest in, and I don't think that that's the nature of our business.
Others, thank you, Evelyn.
I I don't have enough information on this email to understand the practical path this would take. So I I don't see how we could do this as a town government. And a mayor, you suggested it certainly muddies the waters at the very least, but I, so I, you know. They get so great idea on some level to bring a carousel or something with more amenities into town. But as Councilwoman Bryant Ward stated, it hasn't happened. We're not the ones to probably make it happen, uh, with everything else that we're doing. So I don't support this proposal.
Okay. Anything?
I see a lot of complications, a lot of problems coming up to it, and I'm not sure if we want to get involved in all those problems.
Councilman Jenkins, anything?
I mean, I would agree with the Councilman Trowland with that, you know, that they they do, or Councilman Brian Ward. I I've seen, they do phenomenal work. I mean, it's just, it it's an artist. They're that talented. And I've seen other communities that have this kind of facility in their town. And it is a welcome economic development, place drawing facility, which is what I think eventually we still want La Plata to be. But and and so I I I I'm torn between trying to get this established again to make it a centerpiece of the town because unfortunately it could go some other place. But at the same token, I I I'm just uncertain about what, as Councilman Trowland aptly said, what's the forward path? I I just don't know and I don't know, um, what we can do per se. And I've had a little experience in doing five oh one C threes and we have to go back and do it all over again. Uh, it's, and that's not unsurmountable, but I just don't know what, not that we're not good, but I I just don't know what we we could do to add to it, to to attract and keep it in the town.
And then the question would always be that we have been battling with, where does it go? So you have a new board, you do the, you do all of that work, where is it going to go? And that has been the question since, you know, the the day that they have started this. They've had several different areas that have almost worked, but fell through in the last minute. So I I know that, uh, the president of the Southern Maryland Carousel Group, uh, said that he would appreciate an answer within two weeks as we would like to give other municipalities in Southern Maryland the opportunity to consider this offer. So I am hearing, um, that, uh, we, yeah, we, yes, we don't have the that we weren't going to take this opportunity. Is that the consensus that we wish them much luck? But this isn't something that we can take on? Yes, yep, okay. All right, I will respond, uh, to Mr. Boggs with that. All right, that brings us to matters of information.
We have not, as you see this on the agenda. We'll see you again next week, so if something comes up before then. Of course, matters of information is not as, I want to say important now that we do a weekly report. You guys are at the breast of certain items, but, um, any information or any questions you have of me at the end of the day.
Anything?
Uh, yes.
Yes, sir.
I I was curious about the status of the ongoing, uh, discussions with the county as to the water.
So the chief negotiating team back there at the table.
Mayor and counsel, uh, we have been, we have met with the county uh, four times in the last two weeks. Um, I will say that, um, uh, there is more interest from the county in trying to press forward. The town did put forward another proposal to them uh, based on their, really what I would consider unwillingness to share uh, appropriated water, uh, out of the ground. Um, so, uh, the the gist of the proposal that we put forward was basically that we would buy from them up to a million gallons a day over at Tillman Lake and that we would pay them for that water. Uh, for all of the water during the year, we would pay them at what we would call the appropriated rate. And so we consider that rate, what it costs them in electricity and sodium hypochlorite to disinfect the water, but not any distribution charges or whatsoever. So it would be at whatever it costs them to get the water out of the ground because basically they're getting the water for free, as we do with our appropriated water. Uh, at the end of the year, uh, the budget people, Kevin and, uh, Jake, would get together and decide how much water was purchased from W S S C and what the percentage of water was purchased from W S S C based on the county's overall usage. And, uh, whatever percentage that is, we would then reimburse the county at the W S S C rate, which is approximate, it's currently four seventy-five. But of course, by the time we start buying water, it will probably be, I think we've been using five dollars and a quarter in our model. And that's five dollars and a quarter per thousand gallons. So it's a, you know, even though we consider that a very expensive rate and it's about ten times higher than the appropriated rate, it is something that is reasonable because we would both then be paying for the same percentage of our water from the surface water that would come from W S S C. So we.
I'm sorry. So you said at the end of, is it the end of the fiscal year, the calendar year?
Well, I think however we establish that, we would, every year, we would set a time that we would come in and adjust on an annual basis to look at the percentage of water that was purchased, uh, from W S S C. And whatever that would be, then we would reimburse the county for that amount.
And how many gallons per day?
I'm sorry.
How many gallons per day did you say?
Um, we would be able to purchase up to a million gallons a day through the connection at Tillman Lake. Um, what I, in a meeting that I had today with Olin Strauss from the county utilities. And then let me just say that when you look at this from my perspective, um, and I don't want to take anything away from Janine's planning documents and things like that. Um, listen, we, D R Horton has purchased two hundred, uh, school seats per year as part of their D R A. And then we have a hundred that we allocate, but they're not one for one. So in the D R A, each school seat is a one-for-one allocation. In our allocation, we do it based on the formula. And so we could probably, if we could, uh, get up to four hundred, maybe, in a year. My assumption is, and based on my things, you would assume that we might average, say, three hundred over the next ten years. We know today that the town of La Plata in two thousand and twenty-one, we averaged pumping out of the ground, uh, eight hundred and forty-four thousand gallons per day. Eight hundred and forty-four thousand, that's a good number to think of. And if we averaged, if we averaged three hundred units per year, which is three times more than any year we've ever done in the past, but let's say we averaged three hundred units per year. That means in ten years, we would do three thousand units. It would not double the size of the town. We currently have about thirty-eight hundred customers. And of those, I believe there's about thirty-two hundred residential units. So we wouldn't quite double the town if we did that. And if we did that, that would mean that we would still, in ten years' time, only be doing, if you doubled the eight hundred and forty-four thousand that we averaged in two thousand and twenty-one, we'd still be at one point seven million, which would mean that we'd only be buying a little less than five hundred thousand gallons per day. So I think that's, you know, what we're looking at. We're very careful to always be sure and cover ourselves and to make sure that we have the resources to be able to grow and those kind of things. But the reality is, when you really look at the numbers as they're coming about and you try to put a more reality into this, you know, that's what we're actually probably looking at in the future. The negotiations have not been easy, but I will say that at the end of the meeting, for the very first time, the state asked the question of the county because the county kept stressing that they wanted to be fair. The state turned and said, Mr. Saul made a very fair proposal last spring. Why not go with one of the town's proposals because they all seem pretty fair? And I won't take words, but isn't that kind of the gist, Kevin, of what you gathered from Robert's statements?
Yeah, the state did ask the county what is wrong with that.
So the response was, we're working on it. And so, um, that's been part of the interesting piece is that what we did, the county has always been very obstinate about sharing any of its water appropriation. And what water appropriation is, is that nobody other than the state owns any water in the ground or on the surface. The state owns it all. And the state gives water appropriation, whether it's surface water or subsurface water, and says, you can pump this amount of water. And so what we're talking about in this deal with the county is basically it's water that's given to both of us and who gets it. And so what we've been saying to the state, our position has been, and every single time, I have tried very, very hard to make sure that what we put forward is fair. And in our minds, that's what we've done. The, um, this last proposal that we made was done because the county said they did not want to share their appropriation with us. And I said, that's fine. You don't have to share your appropriation as long as you share water with us. And then we'll pay you what it costs to to pump it out of the ground for it. You can keep the appropriation, but you have an agreement with us that you'll share up to a million gallons a day of the water that's given to you.
And the salient point that you talked about earlier is the state permits it.
That's right.
County doesn't own it. We don't own it.
That's right.
We're all had the same straws in two different aquifers. So to make it for me is very simple, it behooves everybody to cooperate to provide a needed resource to the residents, whether they're in the county or in La Plata.
That's correct.
So the bottom line is we're still talking?
We are.
And are we nudging one way or another?
I s- I think it's, um, I will say that we came out of Friday's meeting feeling a little bit better, um, that I think the state had obviously, um, I, in my mind, the state has been talking with the county and kind of indicating that they need a deal sooner than later. And that if they don't come up with a deal that's jointly negotiated, that the state may step in and they may not like what the state steps in.
Who in the county has a decision-making authority as your discussions are taking place? Is it staff or commissioners?
Well, we're, we're working with Jason Groth and Jake Dyer from the county staff. It's very interesting. Um, in, on our side, it's your operations guy and your finance guy who are negotiating from our side. Over there, it's their planning guy, Jake, I mean, Jason Groth and their finance guy. The actual utilities people aren't really involved in these negotiations from the county side. But ultimately, no different than us. I mean, Brent ultimately is the decision-maker. Um, and over there, Mark Belton is the decision-maker. And once the staff decision is made, ultimately, you know, it goes back to the elected officials. But um, it's, I I think we're getting closer. It has taken a lot of time and sometimes it's very frustrating for me. I I can be a
Yes, you can.
I I, you know, I could be, you know, I mean, they very.
That's one word.
I mean, it's important. It's important that you're you're pushing the issue. My only question is, is there, is there a timeframe for resolution? Is there a next step if we, because it seems like the town and and you and Kevin, Mr. Manuel have been working on this for a very long time.
Yeah.
So what is, what is the practical timeframe where we say, okay, state of Maryland, we've come to play ball and they're not playing, and what does that look like? You know, if you can address that briefly.
Let me, um, let me say this.
Sure.
To discuss, uh,
Well, let me, let me retract that. Is there, is there a timeline? Is there any deadlines for anybody to try to get any kind of resolution?
Well, certainly the 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 pending deadline is when you run out of water. We cannot appropriate more than one point two, three, four, uh, million gallons per day. That means we have about four hundred thousand gallons per day left in our inventory, which gives you another thousand homes. So we could build another thousand homes in La Plata and keep you doing exactly what we're doing today.
To be clear, La Plata is not running out of water.
La Plata is not running out of water.
Thank you for saying that on the record.
More than enough water, um, you know, we we could build a thousand units, which, you know, a couple of years ago, before D R Horton came along, was ten years supply. a couple of years ago before D.R. Horton came along, was 10 years supply. So we were more than enough because a water appropriation permit's only good for 12 years.
Okay.
So we didn't feel under any, and so now when D.R. Horton comes in and starts wanting to build more, it certainly does put pressure on. But the bottom line is, um, there are several things that are pushing, and that is number one, the county has two water appropriation permit requests in. And so there is pressure from their side or on their side because they're asking for more appropriation and the state's not willing to act on that until they know they have a deal with the town of La Plata.
And is it fair to say that the town has been working probably the last 10, 15 years on this process?
Oh, I, I, ever, Mr. Jenkins, you know that ever since the day I've been here, we've been up there asking for more appropriation.
I just, again, want, want to make sure that everyone knows that the town has not been sitting around, you know, twiddling their thumbs on this stuff. There's been an active engagement for a lot of years to look at infrastructure, including water supply.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Um, our infrastructure is very good. I've been here 15 years and since the day I got here, we've been negotiating for more water. Mayor Ekman, uh, who was back in the, uh, in the 1990s, had asked for more water appropriation at that point. Every time, we've been turned down because we didn't need it. So.
So in the annexations that are coming on, they're not new. They've already been a part of our water allocation up to.
Yes, we, we have put those into the charts that we have used for water appropriation. The pending annexations, we always put them into the chart and we put planning figures in there for where we've gone. But, you know, we really don't start actively working with them in the chart until they actually start building because so many of these annexations or even potential that are already annexed, don't actually build. I mean, Heritage Green is a great example. They've been on the books for 30 years, they've been annexed for 30 years. And now they're starting, uh, soon. So it is challenging because you don't want to overbuild your infrastructure. You know, a water appropriation permit's only good for 12 years. And I just, I, I, I bring forward that I think negotiations have been slow and I will grant you that. And I feel bad that it has, but we are progressing. I think things have gotten closer and, uh, you know, I hope. My, and, and let me also say that the reason that we have asked for the commitment on a million gallons of additional water is because what we've brought to you about our treatment plant expansion and the things that we've talked about with our treatment plant expansion is to take the treatment plant up to two and a half million gallons of water. And we know that we're going to need about 2.2 million gallons of actual, uh, fresh water, of actual potable water, to then have the treatment plant go up to the two and a half million gallons. So we didn't want to have a situation where we bring you a proposal to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant to two and a half million gallons and we didn't have a commitment for the water to go to two and a half million gallons. So there's a, there's a, a reasonable nexus between the two, uh, proposals. And so that's why we're trying for that commitment. Not that we're going to need it in the, as we talked about earlier in the, those numbers, but it is the fact that we are trying to make decisions that involve some very large dollars and make those commitments and we need to know that the water's going to follow with the wastewater.
All right, well, that was quite a lengthy answer for just a quick question. So thank you for that.
But, but it was a useful, it was, it was a useful educational discussion.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, the opportunity to under Matters of Information.
Oh, we're still there. We're still there, don't you even worry about it.
Didn't do anything.
Sorry, speaking of light outside. Always.
We love you, Bobby, you know that.
This is, I think, a training opportunity I wanted to make you aware of. And, uh, I will be engaging with the organizations, the International City County Managers Association. And I know we had talked during some other discussions about an orientation, uh, on council. So this is an opportunity, as a member, I am allowed to, uh, register. Uh, at the members rate, and they will provide me links to you guys. And then I will provide those links to the council to go on. And it's a, I believe it's a five-session, uh, training program over the course of 16 months, every month, something of that nature. But I did want to make you aware of that to people, to provide that opportunity to council.
I think this is a wonderful opportunity, especially I know, uh, Mr. Councilman Jenkins had, um, expressed a, I guess, a want for this, um, before we even got elected on this. So I think this is, will be very beneficial for all of us, whether we've served before or not.
Yeah, I've had some interaction in previous year with this organization and they put out a lot of good material that's really relevant. Well, speaking for me, to us, I think it's for the town, I think it's really good.
Well, thank you for bringing that forward.
Is this live only or is this?
I wanted to dig into that a little bit more to see because, you know, for every live, when you do what it means, in case you missed it.
Yeah, recording of each session will be available on demand shortly after the conclusion of the live event.
That's easy.
So there you go.
That's how I tend most of my sessions.
Yes, yeah, because our schedules are a little, um, a little uncertain. All right, um, future work session topics?
Yeah, we have, we need establishing HOAs, that's the special, just sort of one bit of strategy. We had a lot of, we call them the HOAs around town, probably crossing everyone's ward. Uh, so that will be a future discussion as well as pre-water use, which I know, uh, Councilman Jenkins had identified, Bobby has a presentation prepared, uh, that he can go through and explain that process and the benefits of that program. And then as we discussed earlier, La Plata Community Foundation Board appointments, that's something we need to, if not for our future expenditures under ARPA, we need to get it stood up just to meet the, their current mission, uh, which this was brought to our attention really when Karina left. I believe Karina was the important member to the, uh, community foundation, uh, as far as staff goes. So we'll be appointed by laws, it's very specific as to what organization's membership must be represented. So we will discuss that, it will be more, he will be well on the back of La Plata Community Foundation Board as a part of that process.
And you did mention something that I wanted to put under Matters of Information, but forgot that we will be having a new employee on Thursday. And what will her title be?
Accounting manager.
Accounting manager and her name?
Martha Bass.
Martha, so we are excited to have, um, a new member of the team coming in this week. All right, that brings us to, uh, public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak, I ask that you state your name, your address, whether you're in the Incorporated Town Limits, and limits your, uh, comments to three minutes. Is there anyone who would like to speak this evening?
Madam Mayor.
Okay. Could you please, uh, state your name and your address and, for the record, and whether you're in the Incorporated Town Limits? Is she still on?
She's not necessarily.
Yeah.
Are you talking about Jean Grey? Is that, I don't know who it is that you're talking about.
Uh, we're just seeing if there's any speakers that would like to speak, uh, tonight. And I know that you had indicated before that you would. If you would like to take this opportunity during public comment, please do. If not, um, entertain anybody else who would like to speak.
So no, I just responded in the chat because mine was a question, not a comment. And if Mr. Scott is no longer there, then he can't ask, answer the question. And I noticed, noted Brad, Brad was able to ask his question, so I was hoping to get mine in. But, um, it's not a comment, it's a question regarding the traffic study for Hawthorne.
Okay, um, and I know that they will be, um, coming back again. So that is a great question to ask about, uh, they did touch upon it, uh, this evening that they will be incorporating the, uh, Mac Middleton, nice, Governor Nice Bridge traffic into that and they will be reassessing that. So they will be looking at that, but that will come forward to us where there is an opportunity to interact with them. Uh, is there?
So I do have one question because I know when we do the, the other one, where we had the meeting before, it was just a comment period as well. So will I be able to ask, I mean, at what point am I able to interact regarding with them, regarding questions regarding how they did the traffic study?
That is a great question and that is your public hearing. That is when the public is allowed to interact with the applicant. And, uh, but in any case, you can always, um, as Mr. Scott said, he is, um, he will welcome emails or phone calls. So you can get it straight from him and ask him and not have to wait for a, um, public hearing.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I, I've contacted him by phone. Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you so much. Um, and with that, I guess I'll motion, I, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I move adjourn.
Do I have a second?
I second.
Oh, look at you, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you all for a great meeting. See you next Tuesday.